Hi, I'm Jim Shaw, publisher of the Lexington Times and Chair of the Board of Lex Media. I want to welcome you to another segment of Coffee with the Candidates. As I say at every segment, we're really fortunate to have an opportunity to meet with our candidates, and I appreciate Lex Media having, bringing the staff together and producing these segments to help people get informed before they have to go to the election on March 3. I also like to say that we're rich with candidates, which is nice. We have a good mix of solid incumbents and some challengers that are coming out. And no matter how you feel about the incumbents, and you know I feel good about you, Eileen, it's always good to be able to have an opportunity to have discussion and discourse when it comes to public office. I think sometimes a challenge helps you exercise a little bit and get you thinking. So with that, though, I do want to welcome Eileen Jay, who's a longtime member of the school committee. I don't mean that like you've been around forever. I mean that you've really rooted, you've got some experience, you've been, you've just, you're completing your third term and seeking your fourth term. And you've done a lot in this while on the school committee. In fact, as leaders, in your leadership role, you're currently Chair, I should say that to the folks at home, you're serving as Chair of the School Committee at this point. You were previously Chair at the start of COVID, the start of, you know, at a time when there was a lot of uncertainty. And I tip my hat because there was a lot of uncertainty. People didn't know what to make of it, least of all how it was going to affect day-to-day lives. How are we going to educate our children, you know, going to remote learning models and other things? So you guys had to deal with some, grapple with some very big issues very quickly without a whole lot of experience on how to do it, you know, it was sort of like design build, right? And I do want to also mention that you're a member of Town Meeting since 2015, so people know that your commitment to the town is not just for the schools, it's all of the issues that face people in Lexington. So welcome, glad you're here, and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Jim, and thank you to Lex Media for doing these Coffee with the Candidates. I've been, done a few of these Coffee with the Candidates with you, and I just think it's a wonderful format because it's a chance to really, as you say, have a conversation just to flesh out ideas and let people get to know who we are as candidates and what we look forward to doing.
Right. We like debate formats. We prefer this for us because it allows people, it gives all the candidates a significant amount of time to talk about the issues that are important to them. You know, we don't, I don't necessarily control the flow of the discussion. I just kind of throw out some concepts and we discuss it. You have the opportunity to talk about the things that you want to talk about. If we're not covering something, just jump right in and say something if we, if there's something I'm not bringing up that you want to talk about. And that's what I like about it because it's not sort of fighting, trying to answer one question for people, you know, three people, you know, fighting for time and, you know, and not getting enough time to make your comments. So thank you. And, you know, like I said, we appreciate this opportunity. There are a lot of things that I know of concern for you, you know, as a member of the school committee. We'll get to some of the hot-button issues relatively soon, like MBTA curriculum and all of that because even though the MBTA is more of a housing issue, you know, they're talking about ultimately it could affect the number of schoolchildren. And I think it's important to address that. But let's talk about something that's important, I think, to both of us, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion. It's been something, you know, I, it's a concept that was, that sort of really gained a lot of notoriety in the last five or six years, especially at the start of the last administration. And the, a lot of the communities, Lexington being one of them, really bought in in a big way. And I know the Lexington Public Schools, again, partly under your leadership, decided they wanted to embrace the concept and make sure that there were these principles were being adhered to in our public schools, both, you know, whether it's, you know, academically, programmatically, you know, teachers, the people that we're bringing in to teach our children. Let me just throw it out to you in terms of, you know, your thoughts and ideas and, you know, how is it working in school? I know that the superintendent has come up with a statement recently about, you know, sort of recommitting to the concept. And I wonder if you feel the same way.
Absolutely. As everyone knows by now, I hope everyone knows by now, one of our LPS core values is "we all belong." And we truly mean that. And I think that's why you're seeing statements coming jointly from the superintendent and certainly with the backing of the school committee, that we really support everyone in our schools. We want everyone to feel that they belong. And that includes all racial, ethnic groups, religions, gender identities. And it's important for not just, it's very important for the individuals of those identities to see themselves valued, respected by the school district. It's also important that others embrace that as well and have it be part of our school culture that we really do respect and have, want everyone to feel accepted in, within our schools. You mentioned that I did play a role in this. Back in 2017, we were in the process of hiring a new superintendent, and I was the coach, one of the co-chairs of that search, that search for the superintendency. I ended up being the one who wrote the job description for that. And because these things were, there were two things that were very important to me as we hired a superintendent, aside from needing the ability to be a good leader and be competent in educational aspects and so on, and administrative aspects. I put as top priorities someone who would be committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and also someone who would help Lexington develop an educational vision. Because I felt like we already were doing an excellent job in teaching students, but I thought that we needed to cohere, have some coherence around a joint vision. And because my background had been in education, and I thought that that was an important thing. The wonderful thing was in the first year Dr. Hackett joined us here at LPS, she instituted both of those things. She got her staff really committed to the idea of doing diversity, equity, inclusion in around many aspects. They wrote a report. We now have a very robust annual systemic barriers report that really is checking on our progress on those issues. The other thing she did was she put together a team, a strategic planning team. I was part of that group, and we went around and talked to stakeholders, educators, community members, parents, students, to see what we believed in as a school system. It was from that that emerged a list of core values that included "we all belong," "care for yourself and others," "use your mind," "embrace your revolutionary spirit," given that we live in Lexington. And those were really meant to do two things. One was to get the school community sharing goals together and having that be part of a culture. And the other reason those became very important is that the students themselves, and we're seeing this, the students talk about these core values all the time. It really was an intention to make sure that education embraced not just the academics, which we, of course, we do a wonderful, excellent job of, but to also recognize that there are other, there are other qualities that we want to be developing and fostering in students while they're here with us, to make them good adults, to prepare them for their future, to make sure they're good collaborators, that they're critical thinkers, and that they're compassionate people, so that as they go out in the world, they will be all of those things, and good citizens, and just good, caring people.
Right. Well, we do, we do have, we do have very thoughtful students. It's a very different time than what, when I remember when I was at Lexington High School. We had solid curriculum, but it was very different, very different time, you know, so many more people are, have the strength of character to come forward to say who they are, you know, and less fear, you know. And I'm concerned that, you know, that we could, because of circumstances beyond our control here in Lexington, talking about national politics, people are getting more fearful again. And that's just a frightening thing, you know, going back to a time when, when people couldn't express who they were. And it's just, it's sad is what it is. But, but I know in Lexington, we're in a good place because we have leaders like you and like the superintendent who are helping people, you know, you know, gain the courage they need to keep going out and fighting the good fight. There are, this is, I don't want to get away from the DEI stuff, but I wanted to talk a little bit, because while you were talking, it occurred to me, you were talking with kids where, you know, who have sort of high academic, high academic achievement. We have athletes who do stellar things. Oftentimes, there are kids in the middle who people sometimes feel like they may fall through the cracks. What are the safeties that are in place to make sure that their kids don't fall through the cracks, you know, because they're either quiet or, you know, they're not as academically, you know, suited or whatever, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but you know, that most kids, you know, benefit by the system. I mean, you're always going to have a little bit of that, but, you know, what do we do to make sure that nobody falls through the cracks?
That's a really good question. Because I think that the high achievers get attention, and, you know, the students who need more support need, get, get attention. But there are a lot of kids in between. So I have two thoughts about that. I think from an academic perspective, I've always felt like what we need to be doing is making sure that there is the right level of challenge for students in that whole spectrum, that every student should be receiving academic challenges that's appropriate for wherever they're at or whatever their level is, and that we shouldn't be only providing, you know, for the high-flying students or only paying attention to those that we, that need our support, which we also do. I think the other aspect of that is just make, is making sure that students are supported emotionally. I know, I'm sure you know this, I, way back, you know, probably 20, 15, 20 years ago, there were people who were very, very concerned about academic stress and mental health. And I joined with quite a few people who were really actively working on that. I was part of a, a group that, that wrote a report on that for the school committee. This was before I was a member to address some of these things. We, many of us came together particularly around helping students with providing, making sure we had some safety nets for mental health.
There was a forum at Cary Hall, too, for academic stress.
There was, yes, yes. I was part of that group that put that together. I think one of the very wonderful things that happened out of that effort was it brought some of the mental health professionals, counselors, social workers within the school district to start working with their counterparts in, in the town with the human resources department. And they actually came together to develop protocols for students who were at risk for stu, whereas students had suicide, lots of suicide, to do some suicide prevention, or, you know, in the unfortunate event that something did happen, they were there.
And thank God with youth coffee.
Pulling together.
The youth counseling connection is kind of works in tandem. And they have a presence at Lexington High School.
They still do. They still do those sources of strength.
Right.
And that's student-led, which is peer-to-peer.
I've been to some of their sessions, and I have to say, I'm just so impressed with their, their passion and the work and the, and the results. Everybody involved in that project is just, you know, to be applauded. Anyway.
Well, and, I mean, this is somewhat related because you had talked earlier about supporting everybody and all identities. One of the most exciting things for me to come out of this DEI effort is that we have, are now implementing a diversity, equity, inclusion curriculum within our schools. This was, this was an ambitious, ambition of ours, and it's actually happening. And it's starting with elementary school where young students have the opportunity to be talking about identities, all kinds of, their own identities, what their families are like, where their families came from, what cultures they may be part of. And then also learning about other people's identities. What's the same? What's different? And it's done in a very, very age-appropriate way.
And everybody has a different story. No matter how much they look like each other, you know, everybody's story is different.
They're different, and yet we still have commonalities. And so with this curriculum, they are separate lessons that are, that are taught and just are discussions about that. They read books, they talk about this. And as they go through those, the grades, those discussions build into kind of learning more about diversity and kind of respecting and acknowledging different points of view, different perspectives. We're working into the middle school grades where they'll be talking even more about social justice and how to stand up for others if you're seeing things happen that are affecting them.
That's hugely important. Standing up for other people, I think, is, it's so important because some people lose their own voice sometimes.
Yeah. And so, I mean, this is, again, setting that grounding, that foundation for, for kids to see, understand why this is important, why it's important to, as you say, use your voice or to stand up for another person. These are very important qualities. The other aspect of the DEI work, again, something that I've been very involved with, is making sure that underrepresented groups are groups that have been marginalized, that their histories and stories and contributions are worked into the curriculum, that accurate stories are there. Our country is made up of many, many different people. You know, traditionally, what's taught has not necessarily embraced all of those stories and perspectives. And those are part of what needs to, to be part of a complete, comprehensive education for our students.
Right. And, you know, and I'm saying this, you're not, we're, we're about to take a giant step backwards. It's now become fashionable, particularly in Florida, you know, to ban books. We tried to do it, whereas Nellman had tried to do it here in Lexington before, Parker, I think his name was, he wanted to get rid of books.
The Parker versus Hurley case.
Exactly. And, you know, and I like to think that, at least for us here in Lexington, it's behind us. But, but we're going to have to remain diligent because we have an administration in Washington that's hell-bent on, on sort of returning back to a time that wasn't so good, in my opinion, socially speaking. But that, again, that's me saying that, that's not you.
We don't, well, we don't want things to move backwards.
No, we don't.
I think the fortunate thing here in Lexington is that we do have the support of the community. I think you may be aware that two years ago, there were some concerns on the part of some residents about the curriculum we were, we were teaching. At the time, it was called Serious Talks. Now, it's, it's now folded into this other work.
Which had been around for a while. They were only discovering it, you know, and making it an issue a couple of years ago, but it had been part of the curriculum for a long time.
Yeah, it had started in one school and then moved into others. But, but what happened at that time when those concerns were raised is that when we had a meeting at the school committee, the wonderful thing that happened was many, many people from throughout the community came to speak in support of what we were doing. And I think that speaks a lot for.
I remember that meeting. It was standing room only, Harrington, they were out in the auditorium at Harrington, yeah, the gymnasium, I should say.
Yes, yeah. And, you know, I think, I think that says a lot.
And the vast majority of people there came to support.
Absolutely. That says a lot about Lexington and the people here and the values that, that they embrace and are teaching their children as well.
Let me ask you just very quickly, just because it popped into my head, a criticism, I don't know if it's a criticism, but it's an observation more than anything, that people often feel that they don't have a voice at the school committee, you know, they don't feel like they're being heard. Can we dispel that? You do hear people, you do talk with folks.
We do. You know, I think some, sometimes people find it frustrating that our opportunities for public comment feel like they're just one way. But that's, that's how each public body does, they take in comments. But people can always approach us. I'm, I'm very open to having people contact me and having a one-on-one conversation. I do that fairly often. They're always able to email the school committee, and, you know, we, we do respond to that. But, you know, I, I think that.
By and large, you're a responsive person. You don't, you, you, you will have a conversation with somebody if they want to have a conversation with you about anything to do with the schools.
Absolutely. I'm always open to listening. I try very hard to be respectful and take in all perspectives because I feel like I'm not doing my job if I'm not hearing multiple perspectives around an issue. And that includes, you know, students, parents, community members, and educators. And sometimes you just have to blend all those things and make decisions that, that as a school committee member, you feel is going to be in the best interest of students.
Right. Let's turn our attention a little bit, you know, I may be putting the cart before the horse here. But the MBTA rules and policies overlay, people refer to it a lot of different things, but ultimately, it's the, you know, the, you know, the mandate coming out of the state for more dense housing in communities, like, like all the MBTA communities, not just communities like Lexington, anyone associated or, or next to a community that's serviced by the MBTA. The, I don't necessarily want to talk to you about the, the housing concept of it because it is what it is. I talked to the planning board and select board candidates about that. But there has been some concern about the potential effect it has on the increase of students. And so rather than start with the discussion about the high school, let's talk a little bit about the potential numbers for that. And then let's segue a little bit into the new high school because people are going to want to hear from you on that.
Sure.
Because that's the most significant public works project that Lexington's ever undertaken. It's a, it's a major effort. It could, it could be the biggest thing in the Commonwealth for a long time because I think it'll be bigger than any other recent school that's been built, after that big hype and buildup. So what are your, what are your thoughts about the potential? Are we, are we taking into account the potential for, you know, an increased number of students coming from 1,100 units of new housing that's in the pipeline?
Sure. Well, I guess first off, we should just talk about what's going on with the MBTA rezoning in, in general, because it's a very hot topic and of course, naturally, a concern of a lot of residents in Lexington. As you know, the Town Meeting had passed Article 34, which had adopted new zoning laws and overlay districts to comply with the, with the MBTA Communities Act. At that time, I think a lot of, a lot of Town Meeting members were feeling like we do have a need for more multifamily housing in Lexington and as a way to make, make housing that is more amenable to, you know, seniors who want to downsize, younger people who just want a more affordable place to live if they want to live in Lexington, our employees, our teachers, our educators having opportunities to, to live in town, which is not easily affordable otherwise. I think no one expected the degree and the, the rapid pace of, of the development. So we have learned a lot in those two years. I think when it was passed, it was, there was an assumption that this would happen slowly, and in fact, it has happened rather fast.
With some big players coming into it, too. And that's sort of changed the complexion. Like when you have some of the smaller local developers, you know, you know, looking to do 30, 40 units as opposed to Cabot Cabin Forbes that wants to come in and do 300-plus units.
Sure, sure.
And one's rental, one's purchase, you know, one's homeownership. I think they weren't so sure about the, the big ones coming in, and that skewed the numbers in a big way.
It did. And so as you know, in March, there will be a special town meeting with Article 2, and that's a proposal to, to quite drastically pass a new zoning law that would scale back the acreage to, I think roughly 70, 78 acres. The requirement for Lexington from MBTA is 50. I think it's 78 because one of those parcels has to be a contiguous parcel, so that added up to 78 acres. I think if that does pass, that, that will change the, the rate of, of development quite drastically. Obviously, we will see what comes out on, on that special town meeting. I think I would be in favor of doing something that is going to replace the current bylaw because if the current bylaw stands, there will continue to be a fairly rapid rate of development. With regard to the schools, you know, obviously if, if the zoning is scaled back, then we, we won't be seeing some of the, the numbers that people are assuming or projecting might happen. And even those numbers, I think many of them are kind of estimates and inflated and higher than what we might actually see, but no one really knows. But as far as the impact on school enrollment, in January, the LPS did a study of existing housing developments and looking very closely at the student density in, in apartments and condo complexes that already exist. And it, they found some really interesting things, which is if you look at the bedroom count of, of units, it tends to be the fact that, that a one-bedroom has a very, very low student density. I think the average density was, you know, point zero something, you know.
Which makes sense.
Really low. But even if you get to the, the two-bedroom and three-bedroom, it was still, you know, something like point three students per house, per unit. A little higher for apartments, a little lower for condominiums. It was also the case that the, the greatest dense student density was in the elementary grades. So that's just information. You can't necessarily completely predict the future, but one of the pieces of that analysis was it took, they took, I think, five of the actual developments that are, that have already been applied for under the, this act, under the new zoning, that they had bedroom counts and enough data for. And, and using that, the formulas, or basically the historic data, and applying those to the new developments, I think the, the totals ended up being, I think, 257 students across all grades to be added from those five developments.
Okay. That's K through 12, right?
That's K through 12. About half of that is at the elementary level, the other half is middle and high school level. Those are not the thousands and thousands that people are afraid of. And, and so I think if, if the rate of these developments comes at a slower rate, we will see presumably similar numbers of students per unit coming through.
Right.
So I think that's very useful to, to understand that, you know, again, it's not a total predictor, but I think it's helpful to know that, that the, the number of students, even though it may add up to some. even though it may add up to some, you know, I think we're seeing, you know, hundreds per, for, you know, for these numbers of developments that are coming in, you know. And as more are added, of course, it'll be, will be extra.
All right. So let's take it one, one step further and let's go to the issue of the actual new high school. It's, it's a huge proposal. I know it's been sort of in the public eye for some time. There's been some discussions and it's been whittled down through a series of public hearings and meetings and processes that, where it's been determined, you know, this is going to be the best fit for this time going forward and I guess they call that BLOOM. And there's been some, you know, some compromise with some of the folks in the recreation world about saving some of the fields and, and, you know, making use of the, the space that's available. Where do you see all this going at this point? Obviously, I can't imagine that, you know, we're, we're at BLOOM now. I can't imagine retreating from that. Is there still time for public input? Do people, do they still have a chance to, to, you know, to have some say over, to, you know, like the folks that want to save the football field? Has that bus left the station or the train left the station? You know, do, you know, because I know there is, you know, time is money.
Yes, of course.
I get that. And that's, you know, we're already talking about a hugely expensive project. So are, are we moving forward with BLOOM? Are we still taking public opinion? Where, where does all that stand?
Okay.
Yeah.
All very, very good questions and very applicable at this point in time.
Yeah.
I, I think it's been known for a long time that we need a new high school. The, the school is very overcrowded. The systems, the age of the building is, is just not, it's not sustainable. And whatever we do has to be in our education plan. I'm not able to speak specifically about, or, or express my personal opinion about aspects of the, the design and construction because I'm, I'm in a butter to the high school property. But I can talk some about the process that's going on and the process that's required by the MSBA, which is the state agency that will be, that we are part of and that, that funds reimbursement.
A big part of it.
A big part of it. I mean, people are saying roughly $100 million out of, out of this project cost, which is obviously considerable. They have a very prescribed process. One aspect of the process is that the, they're, each town has to create a school building committee that's responsible for the, working with the designers to come up with a concept and a plan and put that forward to, to both the, to, to both the residents of Lexington and the, the state. That is a separate entity from the school committee. So I think it's very confusing for people, but the school committee, the members of the school committee, like myself, do not take part in the specifics of the design of that. And so as far as being on a, there are many, many, many aspects of being a school committee member aside from this project.
Right.
To work on. And, you know, I, I think, you know, I believe I could be an effective school committee member even though I'm, I'm having to recuse myself and, and avoid deliberation specifically about those things. So I, but as far as where we are in the process, the school building committee has come up with its, what they call the Preferred Schematic Report that gets submitted to the state, to the MSBA. That's already been submitted. And so the next step in the process is for the MSBA to review and approve that. So right now, that is the only plan that's before the state. They do only entertain one official plan that's submitted by the town of Lexington. You know, I think anything where people are, are thinking of, well, can we go back? Can we, can we come up, you know, can we get more engagement? Can we revisit plans and so forth? That will clearly delay the process because I don't think that the MSBA is, is likely to want to revert back. The, and as, and they are very clear about, they, they don't only do single projects. They fund it at once. They're, I don't believe they've ever done anything that's been a phased project of, of that kind.
Right.
So that's, you know, hopefully, things are, will move along and we will get the state's support on this project.
Well, we're, we're pretty much at the end of our time. I want to thank you for taking the time. We've been here almost, just about 35 minutes. So I, I, if there's, I don't know if there's anything we didn't cover that you want to mention quickly, but more importantly, I want people to know where they can learn more about you. You know, the websites or other places, you can let people know.
Can I just say?
Of course.
Some, just a few things that, that, before we.
Of course.
Before we wrap up.
Yeah.
I think we know and, and we've talked about a few really big challenges that are facing us in the coming years.
Yes.
Obviously, the building projects, the MBTA, school enrollment, that is so unpredictable. In addition to that, we're facing a lot of budget pressures. And these are not easy challenges. Things are very, very complex. Just learning about budgets and being familiar with the ins and outs of school and municipal finance is very, very complicated and detailed. It takes years to really, really understand a lot of that. And I know there's a very steep learning curve being a school committee member. New members take quite a few years to come up to speed to that. So I feel like this is a particular moment in time where having that experience on the school committee is going to be extremely valuable. And, and I know I've been through a lot of budget cycles. I've faced a lot of tough issues along the way and, you know, I think that experience is going to be extremely helpful as we move forward. In addition to that, I think there are a lot of other curricular things and education-related things that, that would be my priorities in the next few years. I think among them are making sure we're, we're teaching kids foundational skills, literacy, math skills. Literacy is a very big one coming at, that's getting a lot of attention. We do very well in literacy, you know, 80 to 85% of our students are reading at or above grade level, are proficient at reading. But we still want to make sure we're teaching every student how to read. And those are the things that we are going to be digging in pretty deeply in, in the years coming up. The DEI work, we've already talked about.
Right.
And just making, and the mental health, and just making sure we're taking care of our most vulnerable students. I think that all those things are just really the, the key, the key of, of serving our students as, as school committee members.
Right. Well, your compassion is shining through and your commitment to make, helping kids enjoy the learning process and, you know, really shine, I can see it.
I get to, one of the most wonderful parts of what I get to do is talking to students and I hear them, you know, I've heard, for many years, I've heard students talk about, you know, being anxious or stressed or, or feeling unseen. I've talked to students who really, really want to see their, their heritage represented accurately in the curriculum. And so all of these things, those really speak to me. And, and that's at the heart of what I do on the school committee is caring for those students in those ways.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here. I want you to let folks know where they can find you.
Yes.
Online.
All right. Well, I hope that people will be interested in finding more about me. Eileen J. for School Committee. My website is jforschoolcommittee.com. That's spelled out in letters, no numbers. And there are still some opportunities to meet me on my website. You can look at some events that will be, some coffees that have really an opportunity to talk one-on-one and answer any questions that you may have. There are still some forums with all the candidates so that you can really learn about each person and, and what their perspectives and what their hopes and their desires for being on the school committee are. I would very much appreciate your vote on Monday, March 3rd. And I am really grateful and honored to serve the Lexington Public Schools and our children of Lexington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much. This is really great.